So Sandy, I would just say, you know how we had four items? One was your, was the reopening of the centers. One was the fitness equipment issues you're having. One was, I don't know, your budget. You were submitting a budget for next year and there was another, another one. I would just say, we don't need to elaborate much on them because it's just you and me. But why don't you go pick, you know, start from the top and give us an.
I had, I'm asking for outreach coordinator's position for the department. We currently have an outreach coordinator's position and an outreach worker just under that person. They're both vacant and we're hoping to fill them, but they're funded through the grant, the Greater Springfield Senior Services Grant. And so they are beginning to ask Springfield to finance the salaries for these positions in over time in the next couple of years. So for this budget, I put in for the outreach coordinator's position to be financed through the city. The other position was a medical assistant position, which would be a part-time. Just to have someone with some background on staff here to answer any questions the seniors have. Check their medications, remind them about refills, the interactions between meds. You know, maybe for to help facilitate with Helen's department for flu vaccines and those kinds of things. And to do some medical information services for the seniors. It's been a, a topic that's pretty popular with the seniors. They really enjoy, you know, even getting their weight checked or talking about diet, Terry needs and how to be on a salt-free diet. What foods are good, just general, good, healthy living kinds of things. So I thought if we could get someone in here, we had one on loan from Health and Human Services, two and a half years ago. And since then, they've been saying, you know, when are we getting someone back? So I put that in the budget. The other one was for looking into funding for a maintenance contract for the two centers. Our Ray Jordan and the North End Center. Because we have fitness centers in both of those facilities for upkeep, maintenance and recommendations and how to maintain the equipment we have. We were given this equipment five years ago when we first opened and we haven't, you know, been able to service the, the equipment since then. And the last thing was to talk about funding staff person or whether it has to do, go out to bid, but to reopen the kitchen to start serving hot meals again. That's a huge draw for our seniors and for many of them. It's the only hot meal they get in a day. So I would really like to revisit that possibility. So those were my asks in this year.
All right, that's great. Let me just ask a question or two on each of those. So the outreach positions, the reason, when you say you put it in your budget, you mean next year's budget?
Correct, FY 23, correct.
Yeah, okay. And it's gotta go in there because it was never in there before because it was always paid for by the Greater Springfield Senior Center?
Exactly.
Senior Services, I mean, okay.
And I know that all of the surrounding communities, Councilor Allen, have, their cities and towns pay for those, that position out of the city or towns general fund.
Okay. Okay, so you put it in our general fund for the outreach coordinator, the outreach worker?
No, just the outreach coordinator this, this year.
Just the outreach coordinator, okay. All right. Good, and the medical assistant position? Well, the outreach worker, that would be paid for if you found somebody that would be paid for out of your regular budget? Like it would be more.
That's paid for out of the grant right now, but I would probably go forth in another budget year to ask for that also to be.
Okay. And your general staffing, you're down six positions or something?
I am, yeah.
Are these two of those six positions?
Yes, they are.
They're in those six.
And they're critical positions for the department because we do an awful lot of outreach with seniors on every single aspect. I've invited my senior program coordinator to sit in on this meeting today. And she and I are sharing the outreach positions right now. We're doing the outreach work for the department along with everyone else here. I also have Alicia Germaine here, who's our Shine Coordinator in case, I didn't know who was going to be on the meeting in case they wanted to hear about what they're, what they're doing and what their work is like.
I'm glad you have her. Hi, Alicia.
Hi there, how are you?
Good, thanks for coming to the meeting. Sorry, I can't see you, but sorry that we don't, we don't have anybody else here, but we can have a party with the three of us and John.
Four, four, I've got Dushima Washington in here.
Oh, Dushima too, thank you. So, so why don't I go through just what you said, Sandy? Then I'll ask, let me write the names down. So the names of the two people that are here are who?
Alicia Germaine.
Alicia Germaine.
And Dushima Washington.
Dushima Washington, okay. So I'm going to ask you guys, you know, just to follow up with Sandy in a minute. Let me just summarize what she said and then I'd like to hear from you guys about the reopening of the centers and the spirit and what would help you and all that. It's just, I'm glad you came to the meeting and appreciate it. So the medical assistant, so let's go back to that list, the medical assistant position. Seniors enjoy the ability of someone to talk about this. I mean, I have to admit, I'm a senior and I talk about medical stuff more than I used to talk about. So I mean, I kind of, I kind of.
I think we all do, I think we all do.
It's like, oh my goodness.
And you know, we have an office here so that there's, there's HIPAA protection for them where they can feel safe to share whatever concerns they have. And I just, especially after COVID-19, we're hitting an all-time low. I always refer to it as their emotional thermometer. And I thought it would be a good, good thing to have on staff as a, as a steady, constant force and someone that they can talk with and learn from. And be reminded, a lot of them need to be reminded about their prescriptions, about their meds, about how to ask questions at a doctor's appointment and so on. It's endless. So I just thought, and really I think part-time, a part-time person would satisfy that need.
Okay, that's, that's good. So are you, are you, those three positions you just mentioned, the two outreach positions and the medical assistant, are you actively looking now or you can't because you don't have the budget money or?
Well, I can, I can, I can post the jobs, but I did an upgrade for the outreach coordinator's position. It hadn't been updated in maybe nine or 10 years. And, and you know, the roles change and the scope of service changes. So I thought that that position was definitely due for an upgrade. So I had turned, I had turned that in and that sits before, I don't know, I think it's before PRC right now.
Okay.
So I haven't heard back whether that's been accepted, but the ask in the budget was for that upgraded level.
So let, let's just do a little budget game here for a second. So it's four more months in the budget year. And you've been under, you've been understaffed for a good part of the year. So do you have, do you have available money in your salary line? Or I don't know how the city works that, but like, could you, you know, if you find the outreach coordinator and outreach worker, could you pay for them out of your leftover salary line code from, you know, fiscal year '22?
No.
Oh, okay.
So they would have to be paid out of the grant until the new fiscal year continue to be paid. There was a hesitancy on my part. I didn't want to hire someone at the current rate. If I upgraded the position, it was kind of, I'm caught between a rock and a hard place, awaiting a decision from the city on the finance end. And it's only the one position, just the coordinators. Yeah, the outreach worker can be, let me give you a little history. We've posted these positions, how many times, Dushima? Four times for the coordinator and three, and three times for the outreach worker. These are positions that historically haven't drawn folks that stay very long. I, my sense is that the salary has been subpar. And also a lot of them are seeking to get their master so they can move on. So if they get their MSW, they're going to look for a job that pays for that. So we kind of wanted to be at least competitive with what the job requires in terms of salary.
So you get somebody in there and then they get another degree or something and they leave the position?
Correct.
And is that the position that Zee Johnson was in?
Yes, the outreach coordinator, that was Zee's position. And she finished school and found a better job and we wish her well, but it just left us with that spot vacant again.
Yeah. Okay, so, so logically speaking, say you get that approved for July 1st. When would you, can you start recruiting for that? You know, the.
I would start recruiting, yeah. They have to post the jobs on the city's website for at least 10 working days. So for two weeks, the job is posted publicly. And so folks that apply, then the, they review them, they send me the names and then I set up interviews. So it's a process. So I would start it right away because I know it'll take a few weeks to get it moving.
Yeah, you could start it well in advance of July 1st, right?
Well, I can't post the salary until I know what it's going to be though.
I got you. So what, what can clear that a little bit? I mean, you're six people on your staff. That seems like that's a big deal. You and I think you said, Dushima are kind of serving in that role now and you have other jobs to do. What's the logjam with getting that started? Is that, is that me talking to TJ? Is it Helen? Is it, is it some sort of, you know?
I think, well Helen's aware of it, you know, I keep her apprised of where we're at with everything. I believe it had to go to PRC and then finance, that those are the steps. And I've, I've asked HR where we're at with it and I think it's in finance now. So it might have gotten approved by the PRC committee and now it's moved to finance to find the funds to support the position.
Okay, all right, that's enough. I was just in a meeting with TJ, but he wasn't, I don't know if he's out today or whatever. He wasn't able to make that meeting, but I'll catch up with him in the next couple of days and I'll ask him about that.
Okay.
Okay, let's go down the list then to, while, while we're on it, the outreach assistant, the outreach worker and the medical assistant, are those posted now?
No.
Is there a reason that, I mean, does something have to happen for them to be posted?
They were, they were posted, no one applied. I reposted them twice, the outreach worker position, I posted twice. No, no one applied the first time. The second time, one person applied, but they, they didn't have the qualifications. So I, I will repost. Then of course, we closed again with the rising numbers with COVID. So now, now that we're trending back towards opening, I can, I can get these posted once again, which I will be doing.
Okay, well, yeah, why don't you do that? And because it's hard to get going when you're so understaffed, you know? So is there any, like this Greater Springfield Senior Services? I don't know what they do, but I could guess, like, can you contract out of positions like that to somebody? Is there any services in the area that do that kind of thing? Like if you know, you can't hire somebody, you know, can you hire, what's that place in East Long Meadow Center? You know, the one.
Yes, I know what you're talking about. I can't think of the name of it.
Greater.
Right off the road, right?
Yeah, that's a big successful business right now and they, they provide services like this for, for seniors. And I think people pay their, their own selves. I can't believe that I can't think of their name. I was just talking to them yesterday, but.
Isn't it like Golden something?
Yeah, they're Golden Years, Golden Years. You know, there's others, there's other firms like Golden Years, I mean O'Connell out of Hoy Oak and wasn't there? You know, do those places offer services that? I'm not saying that I can approve this or whatever. I'm just trying to think if there's, if we need the services and we, and people aren't paying, you know, aren't applying for the jobs and I can push somebody a little bit and say, hey, let's, you know, we're open now, right? All the centers are open, right?
We've got, yes, they are. We're fully open next week with all of our programs. Right now it's kind of a softer opening, just to let folks know about the mask mandate. We're still doing Shine and CSEP and us doing outreach by appointment has never stopped. And next week, we start with our Tai Chi dance, the hula hoops and, and those programs.
Okay.
Full throttle next week. But I don't know how those places, I guess that's a question I can ask Talia G. Because she helps facilitate for those of us that are looking for staff. We've had this conversation already. She's been trying to infiltrate graduate students on college campuses so that they come out with a degree and they're looking for a job that we can let them know we exist and what the jobs are that we're looking for.
Yeah, I think that was my next line of questioning was, you know, I, I teach at Springfield College. I'm home now, but I was there till, you know, I was there for six hours today or something. And there's some flyer that's been on campus about gerontology. I don't know if they're offering a new degree in gerontology or something. Is that the study? Is that, is that what this work is? Is that the?
Yeah, the outreach work is more social work oriented, a social work. They don't have to be a social worker with a master, you know, an MSW. But they should have a bachelor's degree with some experience in outreach and/or working with the senior population. So there's a, a kind of a sensitivity towards what their issues are. So that would be more the focus for that.
Okay, well, I mean, Springfield, Springfield College School of Social Work exists and I've been in email contact with somebody there talking about, is there a way that they could partner with the city council on providing some services for Springfield? So I don't know if they want money or whatever. So let's, the money thing can sometimes can stop things, but I'm actually email that guy back and just say, would you be interested in, and we haven't landed on anything. It's just ideas going back and forth on email. But I guess I'm, you know, along the lines of what you just said about Talia. I mean, I work on a college campus three days a week and they have people that are, I know everybody's looking for, for interns right now and stuff. So there's a lot of people in need of people to work, but.
We have a dean at Western New England University, Dushima here, used to work there. And so she's got a lot of ins over there with the different schools. And so she's been trying to actively cement our relationship to get some recruitment going. So we're trying to be a little more creative instead of just on the city's website.
I would say just do that as much as you can. I'll reach out to that social work guy and who knows? Who knows, maybe one of these things would work.
Right, and I could send them a, a job description if they wanted to post it for us. So we get some of these, these people and get them to, you know, commit to staying in the area.
Send it to the Career Center at Springfield College and that's what, that's what it's called. It's Springfield College, the Career Center. I don't know what it's called at Wannec and stuff, but.
Same thing.
All right. All right. And the equipment fixer, we are going to talk to Pat or somebody about, is there, does the school department have a contract for service for that type of equipment or anything?
Right, I put a call into Melanie Akobi with the city. And I, I have to talk to her still. I was hoping to have a report for this committee today on it, but I haven't heard back about. I think she's probably going to be looking into it for me to see if the city has a maintenance contract with the school department fitness equipment, correct?
Right, that's what we were talking about, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's those three things. Let's just do the reopening of the kitchen and then I'll ask, you know, Alicia and Dushima to, Dushima to, you know, give me their thoughts on reopening and what, what would really help. So the reopening of the kitchen, that's wrapped up into the whole Palazzo's and.
We're currently under contract with Palazzo Cafe to do the box lunches for all of the senior centers as well as the homebound seniors. We're still delivering to them. And so I just, at some point, would like to have a discussion about reopening the kitchen and what that might look like and what it's like to open it.
Yeah, and that, that Palazzo contract, was that started because of, you know, the pandemic and everything? Just wanted to do something, so you have something done?
Yes.
So that goes on, is that a five-day-a-week thing?
It is for the Ray Jordan Center. The Hungry Hill and Clodo Concepcion only does, well, Hungry Hill does two days a week. Clodo does three days a week. And now we're opening the North End. They're going to start on Wednesdays and Fridays next week for the rest of the fiscal year. And then we're going to revisit after that if we need to increase the numbers of days.
Okay, so, but whatever it is, five days at Ray Jordan Center and us mattering at days at the other places?
Yes.
That you somehow collect orders and get them to Palazzo and they know what to do and where they go?
Correct.
So is that contract got an end date to it? Is that just indefinite?
It's, it's a, one of those, I believe it's March 30th of this year.
People are probably.
But there's a renewable clause for two more years after that, I believe.
So could you?
One year, one-year addendums.
So your main comment on it has not been anything about the service or anything. It's just you want hot food and, and hot soup or hot meal or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, is there a way to have that?
It's a wonderful free service for these seniors. Please don't misunderstand. It's, it's a tremendous gift that the seniors were given by the mayor to get these free lunches, but they're cold lunches, you know? And, and they miss the options we were giving them when we first opened. At the time it was Sedexo, I'm not saying it has to be Sedexo again, but to get a vendor in here that can cook out of this beautiful kitchen that we have that is not being used right now.
Right. So I would say, I don't know, who is that? Do you talk to Palazzo's or does some contract person talk to Palazzo's about adding what you want to it? Or, I mean, I don't know, you're, you're the expert on how this had been done and Sedexo did it and now Palazzo?
Yeah, there's been some dialogue. Palazzo, I don't believe is equipped to come here and cook hot meals for the seniors. If they were to provide hot meals, the price would go up. And they, the seniors would have to heat them themselves. We couldn't heat them up here. So we're talking about congregate dining as opposed to grab and go dining. And the congregation is, is where the socialization comes in and the, you know, you capture an audience and then you let them know about all your other programs. It's kind of the hub of, of what we do in terms of grabbing their attention.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I just got home from Springfield College and I haven't eaten lunch and I want something hot, not something cold. I mean, I can relate. And a little late for lunch today, but it's the way it works. It's totally reasonable what you're asking for, just how do we get there? Get back to that. And I don't know the politics of it or who's, you know, with the contract and all that stuff. So, you know, I love Palazzo, don't they also have the thing at Forest Park? Isn't that there?
Yes, yes, you're talking about the snack bar?
Yeah, the snack bar at Forest Park says Palazzo's, good thing. So I would just say, time to, you know, we're reopening. It's time to have our services back in play and get people back in circulation. And I wouldn't apologize about that. It just, at some point, we need to have hot food again. And I don't know, so I'm happy to have that discussion with, with whomever. TJ's the guy I know, I was saying, know the best, but he's the one I talk to most regularly about stuff like this. So I'll ask him about this and about that other position.
And they may have plans in play, you know, they may have plans to trend towards that. I, I don't know, but it, you know, it comes with a price tag.
They ever have a, was there ever a consideration? You know, we spent, I don't know what it was, 10 or 15 million or something on that fabulous food facility on Robbins Road over behind O'Brien's Corner. Back there is the school department food facility, right? Back there somewhere?
Is that Sedexo's building or is that where they work out of?
They, I, I mean, I'm not as informed on it as I'd like to be, but yeah, if you want, you know, beyond, not on Page Boulevard, but on Robbins Road, past O'Brien's Corner, back there and somewhere is a big food facility that was funded by the city. City council approved this. I was back when, I would say it was five years ago. Henry Twigs, I remember, was very happy with the whole thing and he's been gone a couple, two and a half years. So I'm going back five years. And they got, you know, remember during the pandemic, they were, Danny Warwick was reporting every day on all the meals that were being created for families, free meals and stuff. It was like a million.
I believe that's Sedexo.
Yeah, so, so is there a possibility of having them get back in the game with either getting us meals out of there to get delivered to you? I know that's probably not ideal, but, or they were the ones. I don't know why they pulled out or any of that, but I'm just saying if, that they have a great food facility. They're servicing 45 schools or whatever. I don't know how it all works, but it was, it was pretty impressive, I remember. So that question, did they, did they initiate Sedexo, say, we don't want to do hot meals anymore? Or we're so busy with the school department, we can't take care of you or?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I wasn't part, I wasn't at the table, table for those discussions.
Okay, so again, so I added to my TJ list, that's fine, that's fine. I just, history, whether it's good history or bad history, it's just good to have a little history. So, so my TJ list is now on a separate piece of paper. So, so, Sedexo and position. Palazzo, all right. And how about we turn it over to, I mean, Alicia and Dushima? My question to you is just to hear, you know, Sandy and I met Monday, so I heard about the reopening and all that. If you could just add your two cents, how exciting it is, how, what your hopes are, what would really help in getting this place going again? It's got to be exciting for you guys to have people. I mean, at Springfield College in my little academic office, the business department, or I teach out of, you know, there've been two people in there all year because nobody does office hours at school and nobody does, it's the same thing you guys have been facing. I go in in the morning, I teach my classes and then you come back to the department. There's nobody there except the secretary. And, and today there were about five or six people there and eight people. And it was just a whole level of activity and fun to see people again. So if you could just comment on that and what you think we could do to, to help.
They're, they're staring at each other too.
I know.
Go ahead, who wants to go first?
I guess I'll go first if the week is making me.
Did you hear that?
Alicia's, Alicia's, I'll go first because Alicia's making.
They're pointing fingers, I feel like I'm in kindergarten for heaven's sake.
You want me to go? Yeah, all right, I'm going to move them.
Okay, here comes Alicia.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, hi.
Oh, sure, look at this, all right.
It's yours.
All right, how are you?
Now that you're, I'm good, Alicia. Now that you're sitting in that chair, you get to ask for anything.
Wow.
All right, flip me your lists. All right, all right, that's good. Well, all right, let me start with the, at the beginning. I'm the Shine Regional Director. And just to recap, Shine assists people on Medicare to find unbiased help so we don't sell any. so we don't sell anything because we're a state agency. Um, so we assist people in selecting insurance plans for doctors and medications.
Yep.
Um, we assist with searching for plans, untangling billing issues, um, helping to reinstate policies when they've lapsed. You know, if someone's in the hospital extended and they missed their mail, um, they end up losing their policy. So we, we figure out how to, um, put all that back together so that they can continue getting their meds and seeing the doctors they need to, um, keeping them at, that ensures that they are, they still can stay home.
Yep.
So, um, so that's what Shine does. Um, so I'm the regional director, um, for Hampden and, and some towns in Hampshire County. Um, I've been here about 13 years. Um, we have one paid staff person under me. Um, she is our outreach worker that strictly handles Just Shine, um, things. Um, we have 35 volunteers, so the bulk of our work is done with, um, supporting the volunteers that go out into the community. So I have just about in every senior center, I have someone assigned, a volunteer assigned to work with the residents of that town.
Okay.
Um, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, um, we're still doing remote appointments because, um, our, our audience and our volunteers are all of the same age group and they are still on that cusp of, um, being very careful about, you know, catching COVID. So we're still doing remote, the state hasn't told us that we can, um, be in person again yet. Um, as a, as a whole, um, some of them are doing, um, in-person appointments. Um, and it, it's kind of up to the COA that they're working out of.
Okay, and is there, um, so as we open again?
Hmm.
Um, is there opportunities for Shine? Are you prepared to offer your services on a larger basis and more people are around or?
Absolutely, as, um, as soon as the state says that we can be in person again, we will be. Um, we do have, um, people that are available by phone, um, and that, and they really can't wait to get back in person. Um, they've been told though, just to hold off for a bit, but as soon as, um, as soon as they can all be back together, they're very happy to do that. So, yeah, um, right now we are still working by phone though, but if, if someone does want to come in, um, I'm here and some of, um, our other volunteers are available as well.
And you work out of the Ray Jordan Center, you yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And if, if with, with the world opening up again here, we hope for permanently, but at least for what we have here, the cent, center's opening and stuff. What would, is, is there anything you want to underscore that Sandy said that would be things that would really help? Positions that we need to fill, things the city council could do, anything that would kind of help? Get this thing, get this whole thing going again?
Um, yeah, an outreach worker, um, Shine and the outreach team really work very close together. Um, usually when they're having some sort of financial issue or something to do with their housing, they typically have an issue with their insurance. Everything gets sort of tied together. So if there's an issue financially, it affects everything under, you know, that they'd have to be paying for under their finances. Yes, yes, so, um.
Okay, so their outreach worker would really help?
That would help tremendously, yeah, um, because we refer back and forth.
And is that the same outreach worker that, that Sandy was referring to? Same person, yeah, okay, I'm just keeping it straight.
Yes.
All right, that's great. Um, is it exciting to have the place being open again?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Good.
It, it brings life to the building.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great, how many people would you say are, on an average day, back in the day when things were regular? How many people you think would come to the Jordan Center in a day? Fifty, a hundred?
Between a hundred and a hundred and fifty, depending on the events that were happening that day. We had a huge lunch crowd when it was hot food.
You did, yeah.
Huge lunch.
I ate there, yep.
On a regular basis, and then add in if there was any kind of activities, they would, they would, you know, stop for the lunch and then stay for whatever was going on.
Yeah, that's cool. And those activities will be back on again, like Tai Chi and all these things are hula hooping and stuff. I'll starting again next week, right?
Right, right.
I might try Tai Chi someday, but hula hooping, I'm pathetic yet, I'm pathetic.
Yeah, oh, you gotta do, you gotta practice.
I do, I bought one of Olander's, I was friendly with Olander 10 years ago, I, we come across each other a lot. And I bought one of those weighted hula hoops that he, that he uses and it's in my gar, it's in my garage. Man, it takes, it take, it take, it take a little prayer, I think, not just practice for me. But anyway, um, that's cool, you're doing that, okay, anything else you want to say?
Anything else I want to say?
I mean, you, you gotta leave something for Dushima to say.
All right, all right, I can put out there, um, well, Shine is funded by, um, the state at the moment, but you know, if the city wants to throw a little money our way, that would be okay.
What would it be used for?
Salary increases.
Yeah, salary increases, um, like I said, I've been here 13 years. Um, the, it, it, our grant is, is completely funded by the state, so.
So your, your, your salary, you, Alicia, your salary is paid for by the state grant?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to comment, I, I don't know enough about it to say, but, but I, I think it's good you asked. Um, that's how I learned, so I don't have any miracles up my sleeves, but you never know, something, sometimes we can have an influence on something.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Dushima, you want the hot seat?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, too.
Hi, how are you?
Good thanks, how are you?
Good, you're like, you're like, very comfortable moving into that seat.
Oh, thank you.
Bye, bye, bye.
Yeah, Alicia, Alicia already showed you how it's done, so you know, it's good, so.
Yes.
Uh, um, all right, what can you, what would you like to add? Tell me, ask for, I, I'm no promises, I just want to try to give some attention to elder affairs and the senior centers and at the moment where it's opening again and, and it's springtime and, you know.
It's very wonderful to be open.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, a lot of our members, um, are really looking forward to all the programming that we have, especially that hula hoop class. And currently falling back to that outreach position. Uh, having to do that, my particular title is a senior program coordinator. And to do that, I also have to supervise the other program coordinators to make sure that they're also bringing about enriched programming to the centers. However, at the moment, I'm short two bodies, I'm, we have two positions for program coordinators that we don't have anyone in. So I'm short two people for those particular positions.
When you say senior program coordinator, you have program coordinators who work under you? And are you literally the people to put together the programs, the hula hooping, the Tai Chi, the different things? And is there one for each location, is that how it works? Is there some, so, so you have, we have you at Ray Jordan Center and do we have anybody at the other?
We have two others here.
Two others here?
Mm-hmm, and then we have the centers, so you have, um, Linda at Hungry Hill, you have Alex at Greenleaf, uh, the Cloud of Concepcion, and then you have Doris over at the North End.
And they're in that same title, program coordinators, their, their role. And what, and you said you have, so though, I think Sandy had told me, I think you just said that the three of them are still, they're back in place at their.
Yeah, they are back in place, they are back in place. However, my position, I, I originally started as a program coordinator. And I was able to, uh, I, I was able to promote and get the senior position, which leaves my old position open. And then, um, Madeline Colefield, uh, retired back in October, end of October, uh, so her position is vacant as well.
And, and her, but her position and your old position, where would they be, are they Ray Jordan?
They would be here at the Ray Jordan Center.
Okay, so like Alex, I know Alex, you know, I used to do Brown Bag with Alex like 10 years ago or something. Is, is she full-time, someone like her, is she full-time at, you know, at Greenleaf?
Yep.
And so she does the organizing of anything there?
She does pretty the same thing we do here.
Same thing you do there, okay. So the, the openings that you have, um, if you fill those other two, they would report to the Jordan Center and they would be organizing activities at the Jordan Center, would they, would they be doing anything in the branches?
Sometimes, depending, um, because a lot of times what I try to do is that whenever we bring new programs in, I try to make sure that they get branched out to the other sites as well.
Okay, so Sandy, is this where, is Dushima the person who was in charge of the Charlie Brown booth?
Pardon me?
I'm Charlie Brown.
What'd you say?
The Charlie Brown booth that I said I would sit in, is she in charge of that? Is she the coordinator?
Dushima, uh, would be the one to set that up, sir, yes, she would. I had in my notes here, because I was going to ask everyone to sign up for a day.
Yeah, um.
So, and maybe we can start in, in, once we open, open, uh, kind of a get to know, you know, meet your city officials days. And then once a week at lunchtime, we could have a different person.
Well, I want day one or day two, if, if the mayor bumps me, you know, or something, he can have day one, but I, I, we gotta get it just. What?
I'll tell him you said.
Yeah, you tell him, like, I defer to him if he wants to be the first one to be in the Charlie Brown booth. But, but it was my idea, really, Sandy's idea, but, um, so my point is, I'm willing to help with that in the near, you know, next week, the following week, um, I, I have spring break the following week. And, you know, I've got two or three days I'll be in town where I could do something. So just tell me a day and a time and, um, how we would pull that off and, um, get pe, get people, just do it. I think some of this stuff, we just have to do some stuff. And I'm willing to do whatever you ask me to do, um, you know, in the next couple of weeks.
Really appreciate that more than you know.
Um, so, so Sandy, you, you've heard me say my schedule before. I teach only Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings and I'm done at noon time. Of course, sometimes I have a city council meeting at one, I, I did it from my office at Springfield College, it was a Zoom meeting. But basically, I'm available any afternoon and I'm available Tuesday and Thursday mornings. Of course, I have dentist appointments and other things like that, but generally speaking, uh, I have a lot of flexibility other than Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings. And then the week after next.
We'll check with you to make sure it's a good time and day for you, okay?
I missed the first part of that.
I said, we'll check with you.
Yeah, yeah, so.
When we create a slot.
And like that week, yeah, that, the week of spring break, the week after next is, I'm going to be out of town till Tuesday, but potentially Tuesday, but Wednesday I could do something. Thursday is St. Patrick's Day, so I figured I'd probably go over to the Hungry Hill Center. Friday I'm available, I don't have school that week, so that's a week that we should try to do something.
Okay, so you're talking about the week of the 14 through the 18?
Eighteen, yeah.
Okay.
Particularly 16, 17, 18. I might be gone Monday and Tuesday.
All right, great, I wrote it down.
All right. Should we do a pizza thing or something where we have a celebratory reopening or something? I would buy pizza or donate or just have to ask, I, because, um, don't be, show me, just say, don't hesitate to ask. You know, last year we did that, um, cookie thing, you know, the procession and I bought those cookies and you guys were so nice about packaging them up and stuff and, you know, I'm.
The unfortunate thing about that, Tim, with the pizzas, that I don't know if our seniors would be able to eat that.
Yeah, well, whatever it is, it could be, you know, some, some, if there was some hot food or something that was, um, some kind of a day to just focus on, you know, anyway, you get the idea, you guys have the idea, I will fund it, you know.
Okay, we'll do.
All right.
Thank you so much.
That's, that's an awesome offer, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Dushima, anything else?
No, I think that, that's pretty much it, if we can get as much.
Staff.
As much staff and, and, and money as possible, that would be greatly appreciated.
All right, so, so let me put one more crazy idea out there, okay? So this is just a silly idea, Sandy hasn't heard this one. So I bought a second car recently and it's, oh, no, it's not real old, but it's old enough, it's a 2009. Uh, my real car is a 2008, I'm not really into new cars. But my new car, um, is like one of those old, almost looks like a police car, like a limo kind of thing. So I, I, I happen to love giving people rides to places. And I know lots of times seniors are looking for rides. So if there was a way, I mean, I would be happy if somebody was looking for a ride and they came to you and said, I can't get to something. If you called me and said, are you available on this day to give somebody a ride? The answer would be yes, if I was available, because I love giving people rides, it's just easy for me. I'm not good at painting and all the other stuff that people are good at. But I'm good at driving, giving people rides, so I thought, well, maybe I could drive my new silly little car, it's a massive, it's a big car, over there and, um, anyway, you get the drift, so I'm.
Okay.
You saved that idea.
I saved that idea and the, the rest of the story is, believe it or not, this is just to have a little humor with it. It was the car of my favorite campaign worker when I first ran for city council in 2009. And he and his wife kind of adopted me, they really liked me as a candidate and he became really loyal. It's not somebody I met otherwise in my life, he was just, I only met him through the campaign. And he, he meant a lot to me and I won in 09 and then, you know, a few more elections after that. And, um, he, uh, he told me in 09 that he would pick me up on election day and drive me around to the polls, like I would be treated like somebody special kind of thing. And, um, so he did, he showed up in this particular car. And, um, so the backstory is, there's a little emotions to the backstory here. Um, he, um, his name was Jack Wojcik, his wife is Patty Wojcik, and they live, uh, off of Plum Tree by the golf course there. And, um, so we did it like five elections and when he showed up that first election in 2009, he said, I got this new car to drive you around in, instead of it, it looks like a limousine a little bit. Instead of it, instead of it being called a limousine, he says, I've named it the Timazine. And so, so he named it kind of after me, I swear this guy was, you know, he was just classic. And, and anyway, um, he died unexpectedly in 2018. We, we did five elections together and he was so loyal and so helpful and luckily I was winning and, and then he died. Um, and, and I told his wife that I would love to buy that car if it was ever something she considered. And, um, you know, they were going to keep in the family and this and that, and she drove it a little bit. But a couple of months ago, she called me and said, I'm going to sell the Timazine, do you want to buy it? So I bought it and that's the story, so it represents friendship to me and his loyalty, so. Uh, so I, I got a little sign made on it, you know, by one of those magnetic signs, it says the Timazine. And I, it's not on there all the time, but it's on there. It's, in my family, some of my family thinks this is the greatest thing since sliced bread. Other members of my family think I'm absolutely crazy, but, um, but why would I do it? But I'm offering that rise in the Timazine to anybody who was looking for it, then we could.
Thank you so much, that's an awesome story.
We, we gotta create something out of that, we'll put our thinking caps on.
Just do something with that, pictures at the Timazine, you know, I got a chauffeur's cap, any of that, any silliness. You guys are the program coordinators, you can think of good stuff. It's a, it's a full, it's like the old police cars, it's a, it's a Mercury Grand Marquis.
Okay.
You know, like the old police cars.
Like a town car, yeah.
It's like a town car, it's like a town car, same, same deal. It would be even better if it was a Lincoln Town Car, but unfortunately it's not a Lincoln Town Car, but it's the same deal. And, um, you know, it's got the full front seat and the full back seats, in good shape, the whole bit, so.
Okay.
We could have some fun with that someday and, uh, drive people around or whatever, I just, there's an idea.
We'll come up with something.
All right.
Mm-hmm, thank you too.
Thank you, nice talking to you.
Nice talking to you too.
All right, put me to work, put me to work, I'm available.
Be careful what you wish for, sir.
All right.
Thank you again.
All right, um. Did we cover everything?
I think so.
Yeah, so so I'll talk to TJ about those three things and just let me know when I can be of help. All right?
Perfect.
Thank you, Doshima and and Alicia for coming to the meeting. It's nice to put faces to names and don't be, don't be hesitant to ask me for something. If I can do it, I will. If I can't, I can't. But I don't, I don't embarrass, I don't embarrass easily.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you as well. Thank you. Take care. Bye.